Good evening, and I'd like to first of all, thank you and welcome you on behalf of Scotts Bluff Gearing, United Chamber of Commerce, and the Governmental Affairs Committee. I am Terri Reiwich with Nebraska Public Power District and co-chair of the Governmental Affairs. First of all, we'd like to let you know a little bit about what we do. First of all, we do host our candidate forums before both the primary and general elections, which is why we are here tonight with you. And also, would like to invite you, as we will be hosting the annual State of the Belly address, which will be coming up on October 28th at the Hampton Inn at 11:30 in the morning. That is where we will host our three mayors from Scotts Bluff, Gearing, and Tarrytown, as well as the Scotts Bluff County Commissioners. So I hope you can attend that. And with that, I'm going to turn the mic over to Scott Miller. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, Terri. Thank you, candidates, for joining us this evening. We'll start off with a question of a general nature. Mr. Franco, you'll have the first response, if you would. Explain why you are running for a post on the Scotts Bluff City Council and your qualifications.
I have chosen to run for city council because I believe I have something to offer to the community. I've been involved in different sectors within the community. I was appointed to the Human Resource Investment Council back then by Governor Nelson. During that time, I sat on the planning committee. I have participated in leadership at Scotts Bluff, Class IV, which was quite a few years ago. I sat on the East Overland Steering Committee. I am currently a CERA board member. I also am on the Western Heritage Credit Union Supervisory Committee. So I try to take a well-rounded approach to the boards I sit on. And I feel that any board or anything I'm involved in is, I try to better. There's always easier ways, different ways of looking at it. I try to bring in different perspectives to anything I sit on. And I try to bring a positive voice in, and better any organization and any committees I sit on.
Mr. Gonzalez?
First of all, thank you. Thank you for the Governmental Affairs Committee, the chamber, and the media for hosting this this evening. I'm running for city council because the city is right now working on trying to hire a new city manager. I think it's important that we have experience on the council, who will help guide that city manager moving forward. I think a new manager coming on board will be looking for somebody with some organizational knowledge to help him in that process. I've served on the council now for three terms, elected in 2012, again in 16, and elected in 2008, '12, and '16, and seeking a fourth term to the council. I have vast experience working with other council members on several issues throughout this community. My involvement in several boards in the city of Scotts Bluff, serving on the Leadership Board of Directors, YMCA Board of Directors, Scotts Bluff Gearing Chamber of Commerce Board, capstone board when it originally came together. It really gives me a good understanding of the dynamics of this community. Working with the folks, as Robert mentioned, on the East Overland Steering Committee, certainly building coalitions and working with different groups throughout the community, I think give me a lot of experience that I've been able to continue moving forward and the progress, keep the momentum going that we have established.
Mr. Caldwell?
Good evening, and again, thank you, chamber and the whole of the media, for hosting our event. I'm Jordan Caldwell. I'm a fourth-generation Nebraskan, and I've been a lifelong resident of the Panhandle of Nebraska. My wife, Tiana, and I have two children, Riker and Reed, and a third one on the way, and we're proud to call Scotts Bluff our home. I'm running for council because I believe this city has limitless potential, and the citizens are not afraid to roll up their sleeves and get to work. I want to be accessible to residents, and I want to focus on safety for our citizens, economic development, investing in our infrastructure. I believe in providing full transparency on the issues, and what the council undertakes is very important. With a continuing decline in population across the Panhandle, we need to be prepared to grow our own businesses and future employees. By doing this, we will continue to be the leaders in the Panhandle, who others look to participate, and results. I served on the council from 2014 to 2016. I have a vast knowledge of that, and I've served on many boards throughout the city of Scotts Bluff. I'm excited to be running tonight, and I hope you get to learn more about me, too. Thank you.
Ms. Scanlon?
Hello, Scotts Bluff. I'm Angela Scanlon. Many of you know me from Cappuccino and Company, but I'm here for something else now. I would love to be able to serve Scotts Bluff as a member of city council. Ever since I was on Adrian Smith's Youth Advisory Board at, like, age 14, I've had something inside me that has really wanted to affect whatever community or town I'm in for the better. And Scotts Bluff has been home for my family for more than 20 years, and the things that this town has given me are immeasurable. Of course, as a small business owner, I am in a unique climate where I have so much support from the community that I know for sure that we survived and thrived throughout the beginning of the COVID outbreak because of this community. And the marketing abilities that we have as a coffee shop really inform a lot of the ways that we bring awareness to a community. We want people to know how awesome we are, what we have to offer here, how great the people are, and what a wonderful place it is to live. And so, one of my big focuses will be economic development, finding ways that we can bring more people to this area and give them activities and amenities that make them excited to live here, and they want to stay for the long haul. So from students to elderly, we really have some great opportunities to make lives better all throughout this area, and I want to be a part of that. Thank you.
Raymond, you get the honors of answering the second question first. City finances seem to be an annual gymnastics exercise. In your opinion, what can be done to broaden the revenue base beyond sales tax receipts?
Well, fortunately, our sales tax fiscal year ending was up 13.45%. I think you read in the media, of course, that the city had $3.45 million that they needed to spend, and so we're taking those dollars and we're reinvesting in the community. Trying to diversify the community in business recruitment, expansion, retention. Those are three key things that affect economic development. So you're seeing a lot of success from our Economic Development Director. We've just, Prime Metals is coming here, as you know. They're going to be setting up shop in the city of Gearing. Olex just is expanding their new truck shop, adding more employees. So doing those things, those kinds of investments in the community are paying off, and we're going to continue to grow that base. We need to continue to grow the business base. Business is key. They generate the sales tax that pays for the fire, police officers, they pay for the library, and some of the administrative services, as well as the parks. So by expanding the business base, we're going to continue to impact the revenues. And of course, the general fund funds, again, all those things, plus they fund some outside agencies, like the zoo, the $200,000, the chamber, the West Nebraska Art Center. But, you know, we're going to continue to expand the economic development base. We've got a good team in place, and we're going to continue to work on it.
So adding a little bit to Raymond, I do agree with expanding the economic base, but we also have to take a different approach. A couple of things that we need to look at is continue to invest in our infrastructure to make sure that we have in place when people want to come and live here. Another thing that we need to look at is we need to continue to look at solar and our renewable energy. When I was on the council, we started that project, MPPD, and then we worked up by the soccer complex. We also really need to try to be a place where retirement folks want to stay and want to come in to live. Those folks have a lot to offer, and something I still remember from the 2016 comp plan was a quote, a direct quote from the comp plan that said, "Don't forget about us. We are still a part of the community, and we want to participate in the community's life." So we do not want to forget about our elders and our retirees, because they are still big supporters of our community. We can continue to focus on the economic development, but by diversifying that in other ways, as far as creating parks and recreation, you see our new pathway project that's going to help us. One other thing that we can look at is our LV840 committee and our LV840 policy. We need to adjust that so we can use that for retail, because I don't know about you, but in the city of Scotts Bluff, there are not a lot of places to buy men's clothing or adult clothing, and so we need to look at that so we can continue to be the hub of the sales in the Panhandle.
I was listening to a webinar from the Nebraska Chamber recently, and they let us know that 30% to 40% of our workforce in Nebraska went to a work-from-home status at the beginning of the pandemic, and that at least 15% of those are going to stay that way. And I think that's exciting. That means that there are a lot of work remotely opportunities that a rural place like ours can benefit from. So we can create more of a community where families can come in, and they can work jobs for other companies that are not located in Nebraska at all, but they can do their work out here, and they can enjoy family activities and infrastructure that we have here in Scotts Bluff. So I would agree with what's already been said in terms of what is needed, but I think there's room for creativity, and there's room for listening to what people here in this community want. It's really important for me to keep an ear to the ground and ask friends, family, customers, supporters, what is it that you want to see? What makes you want to live here? What makes you want to tell a friend? Move to the Panhandle. Come live. Come be my neighbor. That's something that the people that live here are best equipped to answer. So it's been really, really fun to have conversations with local people in the last couple of months, and I plan to have so many more, because I want to make decisions that directly reflect what the citizens of Scotts Bluff are looking for. We have a very, very wise population. I think they're full of great ideas, and so I'm excited to be somebody that can pick those ideas up and share them with the council.
I agree with, we need to look outside the box on some of our ideas. When it comes to our sales tax, we've lost some of our retailers. It's not because they done their business was wrong, it's because it was tied into too much of a corporate structure. We need to start stretching our economic development dollars further. We need to look at partnerships between private and public sectors. We need to utilize grant functions to where the educational people can utilize that for job training exercises, and stretch our economic development money further. And it's not going to be a popular idea, but we also need to look at our e-commerce and some taxation, and possibly the e-commerce. We're being driven by that, and there's more and more people say, "Well, we can get our products at our local stores." You go into Cheyenne in Colorado, they're having the same problems. They're not, the suppliers are not putting them on the shelves. It's fortunate to go through the e-commerce, it's funding that we're losing. We have to look at some ways of possibly recapping some of the money through the e-commerce. It's not popular, but it's something we need to look at.
We'll start off, Mr. Caldwell. We'll go to you. Negotiations are ongoing with Gearing for a new landfill. What measures do you think would be most successful in extending the life of the existing facility, and what do you see as the future of solid waste disposal when it comes to both communities?
Well, one thing, we do know that the landfill is gaining to life expectancy. A plan needs to be in place to determine where the future landfill will reside, and the city of Scotts Bluff needs to decide if we're going to be part of that plan, or if we're going to go out to bid and have a private contractor take our trash. I would like us to be part of that plan with the city of Gearing, and to form a co-op like they have with the PAWS project, where we have a board of non-biased opinions to decide the future of the landfill. I think recycling is still very important, and I still want to see that, but we need to come together and be a regional landfill, because we don't need multiple cities in the area going at it alone.
I agree wholeheartedly with Jordan, based on some conversations that I've had, and I think that unity is going to be the key in nearly everything that we do going forward, but being able to cooperate with the city of Gearing would have the potential of saving money over the long term, and it would create something that has a better measure of sustainability, which is really important. Collaborating with the city of Gearing, I think, would be the best way to go. I am interested in learning so much more about the potential project, however, so I will not say that I know everything about it yet. So it's been neat to talk to people who have more insider information, and I plan to learn a lot more on this particular topic. But based on some of the conversations I've had lately, you know, I think it's fair to say that we don't really want to rely on private companies. That tends to drive prices up, and then the prices can be reflected to the citizens, and we need to be responsible with our money and make sure that we're building projects for the future. And if we have a landfill that other communities are paying to help use along with us, we have the potential of paying it off and even having it as a moneymaker down the line.
I've heard a lot about this, and a lot of conversations about it, but I can sit here and tell you that I have to do more research on this. I'm not really secure enough to say that what my stance would be on it. I would look at it, there's always complications between when you get two cities trying to vie and cooperate. And I would, from my personal point of view, I would look for what was best for our community. If it meant going alone, that's what I would vote to do, and sometimes, we might have to do that.
So in 2007, the city of Scotts Bluff and Gearing signed an agreement that basically allowed Scotts Bluff to take their waste over to the city of Gearing. And part of that agreement included the future landfill for both communities that they would be working on together. We, Tri-Hydro has hired the engineer to look for sites, and they are in the process of bringing that information back to the city. There's a lot of, there's a lot of good things that can happen in building a landfill together, but we also have to look at making sure that we can afford it, because our debt service will be impacted by it. I think we reached the level, I think we reached the point, that we need to turn this over, as Jordan said, to an independent group to work on the landfill and get the politics out of it. I think it'll expedite the process, and I think both cities then would, could be able to rely on good, solid information from a third party that will help guide those decisions in moving this landfill forward.
Angela, you will be the first to answer this question. With the possibility that a new city manager is not in place by the time the new city council is seated, what qualifications will you be looking for in a successful candidate?
City manager would definitely be a very important position, big shoes to fill. Somebody who is open-minded and collaborative would be the first things I would look for. Someone who uses the word creativity and uses the word flexibility. Those are two words I like to hear in somebody that's making big decisions for a community like ours. I think there are probably some great candidates out there. Out there sometimes means the front range and other states, but I'm truly hoping that we see somebody from our area step up and be a viable candidate. I think it would be important to have somebody with as much knowledge of this area as possible, but even if that doesn't happen, we have a council that would be able to inform this person of what they would need to know moving forward. It's going to be a really great thing for the city when a new manager is installed, and I'm excited to potentially be a part of that process and look for the best possible person to serve us.
The first thing I would look for in a city manager is commitment, commitment to the community. He would have to have a full, invested commitment to it, and be financially sound. I mean, he's going to be dealing a lot within our community, but in order to do that, he has to buy into our community. He has to understand our community. He has to be looking forward to future growth and future problems, and being able to think fast on his feet. And, but the biggest thing I would look for is a commitment, not somebody that's going to come in here for three years, build a resume, and move on. So I would, I would look for a person that would be here for the long haul.
You know, my, given this a lot of thought, and working with city staff and working with the current city manager, Rick Kukon, who was former city manager, and with city manager Nathan Johnson, I think it's, to me, it's very key that that new city manager have the ability to work with the team that we have in place right now. So teamwork, you know, to use Angela, Angela says, you know, words are important, and teamwork is important to me. We have a very strong staff. We have very strong department heads. They're very good at their jobs. They've been there a long time. They've made a commitment to the city, and they know, they know what they're doing. They've been very successful in taking on projects and seeing to completion. So I think having a city manager who can come in and be able to work with that team, who is flexible, who can move throughout all segments of this community and feel comfortable, no matter where they be, who brings a vision that's going to be very important, and their vision and the council's vision working together. But more importantly than that, too, we're going to need a council that can work with that manager. You want commitment, you need a council that can work with that city manager and respect that position, be able to support them, have their back when they need to be, be able to sit down and have conversations with them, and that is also part of this. A manager is going to, whoever it may be, is going to move their family, if they have one, across the country. They want to know that they can work with a council that's going to support them. And I can bet you, there's candidates right now interested in this forum.
You know, that city manager position's been open since March, and then we hit COVID, and so it has been lingering out there, and thank God that we were able to find Rick Kukon to come back and to help, because it has provided some stability. But the new city manager, he or she, needs to be a visionary person. They need to be honest, and they need to be able to be trusted. They also need to be invested in our community, and like Raymond said, we have great city employees and department heads, but this new city manager is going to be there to transition and mentor the future department heads and supervisors. And so we need someone that can guide, coach, and mentor the new employees that are going to take the reins from some of those folks that are going to be on the horizon of retirement. We would love to have someone committed here to the future, but this day and age, folks just jump around. That's just the name of the game. So what I would like is someone that would be invested here, and I would love for them to stay forever, and we get as much work done as we can, but that's what we need for our next city manager.
All of you, in one fashion or another, have talked about economic development, whether it's through LV840 or otherwise. Something that keeps coming up in conversations locally, state, and even nationally is workforce. What specific ideas would you have to not only attract workers to the area, but to train and grow our own workforce and retain them, both of those categories in our area? Mr. Franco?
We have mechanisms in place that we, I feel, we have underutilized. We have talent here, and we haven't used apprenticeship programs, we haven't used private-public projects that we can succeed in. Workforce, which anybody that knows, and I've sat on the Human Resource Investment Council, we need to look at mentoring our workforce. We need to teach some of our workforce the very basics of alarm clock training. We need to let them know that hard work does pay off in the end. So it's a twofold. It's not an easy solution, but we have to look at it, and we have to address it. And we have to look at some of the mechanisms that we have already in place, and we also have to grow our own. We do have, we have the talent here. We have the teachers, the staff, the technical professionals that we can use to grow our people. We also have to give them a reason for it. We have to have them buy into our community. We have to look at some increase in our wages. I mean, we can't continue to keep the wages down and expect people to work here for a nonlivable wage. I mean, we have to look at that. It could be some hard decisions, but we have to make those decisions.
So we're sitting in a building right now, Scotts Bluff Senior High School, that's part of that solution, a career academy, now in both communities, where kids are figuring out what they want to do. Some are staying on here and will stay in the community. Partnerships are being put in place, like Olex Industries, with the Community College and with the Scotts Bluff Public Schools, for kids that want to go into those types of, that kind of job, they're now having the opportunity to do that. So they're expanding the skills, and will be able to earn a good living wage. Recently, the city of Scotts Bluff signed an 90-day agreement with Twin City Development. We're pulling all our economic forces together. Workforce was a big thing for Star Lael when she started. She talked about it. They got involved with Becky Horn. They talked about Bill Dakota. They came, and they brought a plan. They said, "Here's some scholarships that we could put together." Help business between, it's a partnership between the public sector and the private sector, to build that workforce, to educate that workforce. Community College is involved. They're at the table. So we're bringing all these groups, the chamber, to address that problem. Yeah, it is a huge problem, but we're going to tackle it. You know, we have a lot of talented people. We're going to tap into that talent. We're going to marshal all those resources, and we will get this done.
The unfortunate part is the Panhandle of Nebraska isn't growing. And so, I agree with Mr. Franco and Mr. Gonzalez, but one thing that we really need to focus on is our populations that are underserved. We need to make sure that they have a voice at the table, but we also need to make sure that they're getting their educational needs met, whether it be at the public school or the community college level. We also need to focus on their children and other children that are underserved, that are currently in homes that do not have structure in their lives, not to mention food on the weekends. They are our next generation, and so we have to get into those homes and meet with those folks to see how we can help them get ahead in life. We have a program called Sixpence through the public school and through the state that is a great program, but we need to get everyone together in a row in the same direction. One thing that COVID has brought up to us is that healthcare is a booming industry, and so we need to think outside the box, like the car manufacturers did when they built ventilators. Why can't we bring something like that, a healthcare industry, into town that could create filters or different masks? Why don't we think outside the box? So those are two different things that we need to look at.
As Mr. Gonzalez mentioned, the partnerships here at the high school and the college are really exciting to me. I think there's great opportunities for students in trades, and there's a lot of collaboration happening right now to create new opportunities. There's internships and apprenticeships. We want young people to know what's available to them before they opt to leave the area. Opportunity can be found here just as well as somewhere else. And again, with remote working, that's another ripe opportunity for us to really shore that up. And entrepreneurship is something that deserves support and a place at the table, and so I've been really excited to be able to talk to some people in our downtown who want to start businesses. They want to open storefronts, and I have directed them to Twin Cities Development for some of their business incubation services, and it's been really awesome to see. But people who have a dream and want to open a small business, they need support and information, and I'm grateful for the people that provided it to me when I got started, but I know that it was sometimes not easy to find. So offering more support to our existing businesses and shoring those up means that dreamers will be able to see that entrepreneurship has an open space here to grow and thrive, and then they're going to employ people, and that helps create jobs. So that's just one small way that we can grow a workforce here, but there is much more to be done, many decisions to be made.
We are running out of time here, so we will ask one more question before the final comments. Raymond, this will start with you. What physical improvements would you like to see within the city, such as streets, parks, swimming pools? And how should the city fund these projects?
As you know, the pathway is under construction. We hope in November that they'll start, it's moving along pretty quickly, very nice project, a very good project. It's reinvesting in opportunities for this community, making this community... in opportunities for this community, making this community, giving it a quality of life, another piece of quality of life. Hopefully, that bridge will go up in November. Completion is set for July of 2021. Twenty-three Club, and that was funded through city dollars out of the general fund and then grants. So, that project has been in the works a long time. Twenty-three Club raising a significant amount of money. City putting in eight hundred thousand to get that renovated. That's a partnership. That's a public partnership. So, we're seeing a lot of changes happening in the city right now. One of the things I asked city manager Kukon was a facility study, park study that we might want to look at, getting that in place, assess the condition of our parks, you know, what is needed, and then what could we do with Gearing combined, with other communities combined. And that might be in the form of a swimming pool. That, of course, would have probably something, if the city got involved, that we would have to bond that project. There's still a lot of opportunities out there. We've got a lot of private folks like the Kiwanis with the Kiwanis Parks. They've gone in there. They've done some great things there. They brought in playground equipment. They maintain it. So, there's a lot of opportunities throughout the city. We're capturing them. We're capitalizing them. We're utilizing them to make this community better.
So, some improvements and some investments that I think, besides investing in our current infrastructure and our streets, I agree that we need to look at our park system. For example, the soccer complex, what a wonderful amenity that we have here. And we have so many young kids that are watching older brothers and sisters, but there's no park up there. Why couldn't we put a park up there? I want to look for places that we could put some new parks in where some young families have moved into. If you think of anything north of Highway 26, there's no parks up there, and there's a lot of young families. So, parks is one thing. I really want to look at an overpass in town somewhere. It's very embarrassing that we don't, we're a big city in the Panhandle. We get stuck by traffic just in the middle of downtown. So, I want to look at that. Again, the overpass out in the highway is nice, but it's not useful. The indoor swimming pool is going to be a huge need that we're going to have to look at and continue to look at with partnerships. And you had mentioned funding. We're going to have to look at grants, but we're going to really have to work on private and public partnerships. The last thing I will say is I would love to continue to see the enhancements down by Riverside Discovery Center Zoo and the Dog Park and the YMCA Trails West. That is just untapped potential. We have a nice disc golf course. We have new playground equipment down there, but we can do so much more down there. And that's a hidden gem that a lot of people in town don't know about. So, those are just a few things that I think that we can invest in.
Jordan's right. We do have a lot of untapped potential and hidden gems in our area. Communicating that to our citizens is super important. Having a central source of information that people can rely on is something that I've heard given to me as feedback, what they want to see as we move forward in city government. And as far as public-private partnerships, that's the most powerful way to get things done in many cases, especially when you're looking at a smaller area like ours. I think there's a lot of great potential there. You know, I've been asking people what it is that they look for in our area, and parks are definitely up there. Places, green spaces and gathering spaces where families can come together. They can stay active. They can be healthy. There's so many other things that we associate with bigger cities, thinking that we can't have them here in Scotts Bluff. And I don't necessarily think that that's true. Public art is very important to me. The Eighteenth Street Plaza has been an incredible space for the events that we've held there, from the farmer's market to Bands on Broadway that I've been able to be a part of. And that project is ongoing and needs to be completed. Does it need to be completed with millions of dollars? No. It can be completed on a reasonable budget and continue to be the venue space that it has become. So, we have an opportunity to really shore up that central gathering space in downtown Scotts Bluff, and I'm particularly passionate about that project. But truly, having green spaces, open spaces, and activities for families is what's needed and what I support.
I am in agreeance with Angela on improvement. I would like to see improvement on the park areas we already have. I think there is things that we can do to draw more attention to Eighteenth Street Plaza. I've attended some of the Bands on Broadway, and it's a very nice organization. If we could continue to improve on that. I'm a strong believer on the interstructure. I want to see the interstructure taken a look at. We can't build a castle on sand. We have aging interstructure that we need to take a look at, and we need to take a look at it before it costs us more money. We have both parties at the national level talking about interstructure grants and funding. And I think we need to look at being on the tip of what the plans are and have plans ready for if we can utilize that money. Because we do need the interstructure. If we get any major industry or anything, our interstructure has to handle it. And I think that's what we need to look at.
We're going to close things out now with one-minute closing statements from our candidates. Mr. Caldwell, you're first.
Well, again, thank you to the chamber and to the local media for hosting this event. Thank you to the constituents, the citizens of Scotts Bluff, watching us online. I think you can tell by the passion in my voice that I care deeply about this community. I will promise you that I'll bring that same passion and desire and work ethic to the council if elected again. Again, my name's Jordan Caldwell, and I'd appreciate your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everybody involved in putting this on. I'm grateful to be here, and I am happy to be on the ballot for this November 3rd. Thank you in advance to those who are going to go out and do their civic duty and vote, or who have mailed in their ballots already. Your vote makes a difference, and your vote counts, both for smaller seats like this and to change our country on the highest level. So, thank you for that. As for me, I am so excited to embrace business as usual. And maybe that sounds boring, but what it means is shoring up small business in our community, making sure we invite more business in, and really fostering the dreams that people have as we rebound from the COVID crisis. So, thank you for listening to what we had to say tonight. And my door, my Facebook messages, et cetera, are always open for conversations with the community. I want to serve you in everything that I do. Thank you.
I want to thank the chamber and all those people for this forum. And I want to thank the people that have supported me. But in saying that, I think we have four very qualified candidates. And no matter how the election turns out, I think we'll be left in good hands. I would like an opportunity to sit on the city council and work with other council members. But if I'm unsuccessful, I think we have some very qualified candidates here to where the city will be in good hands.
You know, what a wonderful community we live in. This is where I was born, grew up, graduated from this high school here, went to the community college. This is where my wife and Linda and I, we call this home. We've invested in this community through, we own several pieces of real estate, both commercial and residential. We both continue to get involved in the different organizations throughout this community. We have so much opportunity, and I feel very optimistic. I'm very grateful to the voters who have elected me in the past. I am very grateful to have served as your mayor of the last two years. I see nothing but good things on the road ahead. We have a good group of folks in this community. We've built it on strong work ethic values. This is a conservative community, ag-based. We're going to continue to move this city of Scotts Bluff forward. We're going to do it together. We're going to embrace vision, and we're going to create a place that people want to stay and come home to. Thank you.
Candidates, thank you very much for joining us this evening and offering your views on a variety of subjects. And we want to thank you, the voter out there in the audience, for joining us, for watching this forum this evening, sponsored by the Scotts Bluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce. Have a good night.